Mr. Will, where are you?
Another beautiful day.
Every day. This is the front of every way, right? Mayor, how many Johns do you have up there? How many Johns do you have up there?
I've seen too many. But Fred, you know what they say, it takes one to know one.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, November the 20th, 2014, 7:00 P.M. Our invocation this evening will be done by Mr. Fred Gonzalez.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, once again we come before you asking us, asking you to be with us. First of all, we thank you for all your blessings and we thank you for these folks that are so willing and generously offering of their time to do the business of the city. We ask that you guide them the best that they can be guided so that they can have the best job that they can do for us and have in mind the welfare of the constituents and guide them to assure that we get to that point that we need to be. In Jesus's name I will ask that. Thank you, God. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. I have an established forum, Councilman Castillo, Councilman Yethil, Councilman Gereva, and Councilman Viver. If anyone will please stand in the ready room. Oh, I'm sorry. I had to get used to that one.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas side, a valid institution to be, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
At this time, I'd like to entertain any citizens' comments. Shall we begin?
Mayor, City Council, and Forestville citizens. I'm Fred Gonzalez and I live in Forestville. Tonight, I'm going to speak about a couple of things, first to express my appreciation and secondly to address concerns that I have and feel very strongly about. As some of you know, for as long as I've been back in Forestville, about six years, I've made it a point to attend council meetings and not just when you evaluate the city management. Also, I've made it a point to be involved in the business of our city. A good deal of the time may not come before you because of my own major zeal, I sound critical, hopefully in a constructive way, but the bottom line, I am passionate about the welfare of Forestville and believe in being involved. Tonight, as we near the end of the year, I wanted to directly say thanks and to express my appreciation. Although sometimes you have irate customers, sometimes may, you're not defensive, I've noticed. In fact, you will take positive action. A good example that I can recall is the recent sewer spill. Since the beginning of the year, also, I see a spirit of cooperation that I haven't seen in the near past and that works for us citizens. I appreciate what's being done to get us back to sound financial footing, making hard decisions to make water sewer function sound reliable, for example, maintaining low tax rate, establishing guidelines to make city functioning more fundamentally sound, and making the city more presentable, things that are not necessarily popular but necessary and you can do a good job of. Of key importance, and I think we need some work still to go, is the financial arena. And as I recall, John Gereva, you were there, Ms. Wagner at one point told us that if we continue to do this, we could bring our bond rating back up to an eight and that would be great and I think we can do it with your help. As for city employees, I've always found them responsive and effective and I thank them for that. And since I'm in appreciating mood here, I think we should express our appreciation to my good friend Virgil Russell, I don't think he's here denied, for his dedication to our city cemeteries. He does a great job. I salute him. Now, the second item is a little bit more difficult, I think, but it's something that I feel very strongly about and the last meeting brought it to mind again. Who is a citizen when we talk about citizens' comments? That's my question. Now, I find this simple to answer, but I think other people have a problem with that. It should be those that are directly affected by what you do or don't do. It should be the people who have the right to vote for you, your constituents. We, the constituents, bear the cost burden of running the city, property taxes, water, sewer, and related fees, infrastructure costs, et cetera, et cetera. On the other hand, we also directly suffer the consequences of inadequate infrastructure, poor services, or a hint of mismanagement of our resources. Folks that live outside our city limits do not meet these criteria, so to speak. Thus, they should not have the right to influence decisions which primarily affect us, your constituents. They should not be able to get through speaking influence what they cannot get through the ballot box. Now here, let me stop a little bit and explain because I know that I've been misunderstood before. I don't look down at these people, you know. Not being a citizen of Forestville is neither good nor bad, depends on what you do or don't do. But when we get to where we're addressing things that affect the citizens, I don't think that we're even or equal. And again, everybody's a citizen and sometimes when I've said non-citizens and meaning non-Forestville citizens, people say, "Well, I'm a citizen. I'm an American." Well, I'm an American citizen, do you? I would say third generation at least and I'm a citizen of Wilson County. But more importantly, when it comes to our business here, I'm a citizen of Forestville. Less thirsty relates to what I'm talking about. How can somebody who does not live in Forestville validly evaluate the performance of a city manager who does not service him? That was a basic question. Who do they, for example, who do they call when they have a sewer problem? A non-operating water well, lower water pressure, neighborhood pot holes, and on and on. Job performance evaluation is not a popularity contest and here again, let me digress a little bit. I've been in the business of personnel management for 30 years and had responsibilities for significantly great programs. So I'm not talking as a layperson. I know what I'm talking about when I talk about personnel management and I find, have found for years, that performance evaluation is a very difficult thing to do. It's not easy. And the reason, most of the time, is none of us like to deal with these shameful things, for example, that you're not doing a good job. It's nice to say, "You're doing a great job" and all of that. So I think that people looking from the outside and not feeling the effect of that person's performance have no way of validly evaluating or putting a grade, so to speak, of that performance. I think it falls on us, the citizens, and you, the supervisors, to do that kind of a job. Now, all of us welcome input, you know, to be able to evaluate property, but again, it has to be input that's relevant to the performance of the job. And I think, and I strongly recommend that you change how we receive citizens' comments to limit comments that address decisions that directly affect Forestville citizens to Forestville citizens. Now, here again, I know, I mean, it's not an easy job to do that, but I think we need to look at it very carefully. And there are several ways of doing that and you know that as well as I do, and maybe better. You can do it simply by a vote or you can have a committee or a commission, which is very structured one, to study and then make recommendations. The bottom line is that whatever comes out of what we do, either through the council itself or through the recommendations of the committee, it still has to go to the voters. The voters are the less people that decide what they want from us. I still again recommend that you look at it very carefully in the coming year and see what we can do. Thank you very much for listening.
Good evening. My name is Monica Forrest and I just wanted to somewhat reiterate, as I did at the last meeting, I too want to thank you for all the things that you do. You have a huge job and a lot of times it isn't easy, but I'm grateful that you are a group and that you are committed to us moving forward and I hope and wish and I know that you'll continue that. I just wanted to remind you and encourage you, I know a lot of times we tend to think with folks, you live out of the city, you have no say, but over the years also, I have seen how we have worked and you guys have worked so hard to bring things together, the city, the county, the hospital, all these different agencies, all these different organizations, and that's the bottom line that we speak so often about. And if we want these folks to come in and to be a part, we're quick to say you don't have a say, but when it comes to peanut festival, the corridor, the Christmas happenings downtown, the peanut festival, oh, we want everybody here. Come spend money. Come downtown. We want them to shop at our businesses and we work so hard at trying to keep downtown Forestville going and the surrounding area. We want them here. They pay sales tax. And I'm not necessarily saying they have a vote. I'm not addressing that. I'm talking about getting input and listening to them and getting them to feel welcome. We want them here for businesses. How can we turn around and say, "I don't really want to hear what you have to say. Sit down. Don't come." So I would encourage you to please keep it open to folks. They have a lot of input as well and sometimes they're the first ones we go to to say, "Be on our committee. We want you to help." "Oh, you're a construction person. We need your help." "Oh, you've got good connections in San Antonio to help us bring supplies down. You know how to do this." And we want their participation, but yet we don't want them to have an active part in helping us to be a really good city as well as a county. So I just ask that you please do keep your mind and heart open to that and let's continue the work that we've already established in trying to keep everybody working together as a unit. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor, I feel that most of these people that are on different boards, they're not from Forestville. Are you going to run them all? And that's what Mr. Gonzalez is saying here. And I think that if you're certain age, you shouldn't say nothing because you're going to see now. And I think that's what's happening here because you know what? It takes a big group of people here to make things happen. I mean, I'll give you an example. Parks Foundation, we have most of them, or they're not from the city, but you know what? We're putting 100% to get the city going. And I appreciate people saying, "Well, you know, if you're not from the city, you don't have no say." But you know what? We're working hard on the Parks Foundation trying to get things to get here. And then we get slapped that people that live in the county don't have no say so. People in the county pay desert from Florida. People in the county pay taxes from Florida. So you know, in some way, we still have some type of a say so. And I'm defending the other people from my board, that they should, you know, at least they should have an opportunity to say something. But I don't think it's right what, you know, people can hear from kind of new citizens just close the doors for everybody else. I don't think it's right. Because after all, if something happened in Florida, I can bet you that people in the county will come up here and help you. I can bet that. But let's not try to be biased in this. Let's take the doors open and let people have a say so in that. And that's not what I have to say. This is wrong. It's totally wrong. This is not the first time I've heard this, but why is it right?
Before you said, I would like to ask you, I mean, we welcome your comments, but I don't appreciate and I don't think the council lets you criticize another citizen.
I understand it, but I've been slapped in the face too and so has my opponent.
We're calling names and we're not going to allow anyone being called names.
Yeah, there's nothing on the agenda to this matter. It's just a comment made by a citizen.
Well, it's not right. You should have stopped it because we move forward.
Okay. With that, we're going to go on to old business. Item 1A, consideration in action to approve meeting minutes for regular council meetings on October the 23rd, 2014. Can I have a motion? I have a second.
Second.
Could I do something earlier than that? Councilmember, will you vote? How do you vote? Okay. Councilman, please.
Abstain.
Councilman, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone opposed? Okay. The motion carries for one. Now, we're going to go on to item 1B, consideration in action to approve the meeting minutes for emergency city council meeting on October the 27th, 2014. Then yes, we're going to, 52 seconds.
Whatever procedure, even if somebody makes a motion at the second, you can still vote against your own motion. Somebody still didn't need to age, the case that ages.
You know, we're preparing the motion, so we take the motion to approve it.
You can still vote against your own.
You had double voting.
That doesn't sound particularly correct.
That's correct. Now we go to item 1B, consideration in action to approve meeting minutes for emergency city council meeting on October the 27th, 2014.
Make the motion to approve the meeting minutes for emergency council meeting on October 27th, 2014.
Okay. Councilman Garcia?
Yes, I agree.
Councilman, please.
Abstain.
Councilman, yes or no?
Abstain.
Councilman Dale? Councilman, please. Then we're going to have three opposed. It's going to be three, two, two. Now we're going to go on to item two, presentation and discussion. We're going to start with A, statements of qualifications for engineering firm, this term.
Uh, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. In your packages, you would receive a statement of qualifications from a law firm, I mean, from an engineering firm, in reference to doing some engineering services with the city of Forestville. They will be coming to you at a later date, but we have this qualification, statement of qualification as well as one of the depending for you to review. As you know, we have three according to our orders, engineering firms, but one of them actually is no longer functioning as an engineering firm and so we will replace that third one. We're looking for someone who specializes in surveying, we have a lot of issues coming up in reference to our streets, a lot of issues coming up in reference to annexation. And so the third engineer can come up. So that's just for your information. You can leave that. If you have any questions, you can contact them directly. We have another firm that's coming, but they're coming to present to you all at one, probably late December or in January first of the year. Are there any questions? Who wants to add?
How did this, how did this firm come about? Did they just, was it advertised?
Well, actually, one of, no, we did not advertise. One of the principals in this firm actually worked with Mr. Hyner and has worked with them for some time. They've been familiar with the city of Forestville and they offered their public statement. I met them again at TML. They've been in their community for some time and so they offered that statement. Then there's another company that contacted us. They're located in Pleasanton. They have an office in Pleasanton and they wanted to provide their qualifications as well. It starts with a W, a W, I believe, but when I received that statement, it'll probably be after Thanksgiving. I'm going to share that with the council as well.
And you said when that other agency?
They're supposed to give it to you right after Thanksgiving, right? And then I'll put that in the package for everyone and then they can come, probably sometime in January, to come and present you so you can be there and they have a chance to, they can talk to you as well. We've been asking questions to record.
You don't need somebody in place prior to that? You're okay with that?
We have the two engineers right now, Burke Engineering and M&amp;S, that we can use. Yes, ma'am.
Now, we're just requiring to be correct or do we?
According to your ordinance, there's three, but you have two that's functioning and one that's out of business. So if you want.
So we have to approve one of the two that are?
Right. You can have them using Burke Engineering to do most of our wastewater. They did the wastewater model. They're doing our USDA. If you are approved for that. You just approved for M&amp;S to do your water model. And so historically, you all have Burke Engineering firms. And so this is just to replace that third engineer or we can just keep the two. It's up to you.
Yeah, because I was just asking because they're, you know, approving, you have to approve one or the other of this one or the one that was, correct?
Yeah, you did, or you can amend that or have as many as you like, but it's up to you. But historically, you all have three. And so I never worked with the third company that was already on the books. It has stopped functioning and so I believe it came to my attention, I think, some comments that Councilman Yethil made, that we would look at that and so I wanted to get you all the qualifications and standards in reference to that and then you can look at it. Or you can leave the two that you already have in place. I'm just trying to give you your options so that you can look at it. Thank you.
Okay, then we go on to item 2B, city managers' report, starting with the low-dye basketball court lights.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Councilman Rodriguez contacted my office in reference to the situation for the lights at the low-dye basketball court. As you know, those lights are out. During my time here, when we were here, those wires have been stolen and vandalized twice. So the lights are out and there is a cost of about $1,000 to $1,500 to replace those in reference to that and according to our orders, we have to use copper wiring. And so I'm asking the board for direction in reference to how you want to go to see for that. The lights are there. They're not functioning. How would you like to do if you want to make them functioning or you want to leave alone? I'm just looking for seeking direction. That isn't actually just asking if you want to have discussion about those lights. Councilman, do you have any comments about the lights? I mean, people contacted you.
Well, I've, I have gone out there and I've taken a look at it and, you know, my unexpert opinion, you know, it wasn't, you know, I don't think it's, you know, quite, you know, as extensive as the $1,000 to $1,500 of damages. There are still, a lot of the material is still intact, but I, you know, there's padlocks on things so I couldn't quite open them up and see what was functioning or what was taken out. But, you know, one of the, some of the citizens from around the area have requested that, you know, that we get it working again. We did put some money into the, into the restrooms there in that area and, you know, I think it ought to be right for it to be functioning completely. There were some other basketball goals that, you know, that some are shorter than others and, you know, basically I wanted to bring that up to park, so.
The only other basketball court I know that you found is the Watts Basketball Court and I know they have functioning lights and their lights are on to past 10 o'clock at night. So I'm just looking for your direction of how we want to do that. The park foundation is starting the process to start looking at all the park areas that we are far from actually making recommendations to bring to the council at this time. So I'm just asking for, you know, some kind of idea or consensus as to if you want us to go and further to look at this or leave them gone from city to home now, so I don't know. I'm not, I don't have a pulse on that.
I think, I think those lights that are up there are actually maintained by, by the folks and so.
We would have to make them functioning.
I just want to find this is getting close to consideration action when you're asking for direction and things from the council.
Just, we can, we can talk, we can put it on. Would you like me to move it on to the next council meeting for action? We can or we can leave it the next, is that better, Chris? Yeah, we can. Okay. So would you like for this to be on the agenda for consideration in action at the next meeting, which is December? And so I can ask that?
Uh, we can just put it on if one of the council members wanted to put on. Uh, we can just put it on if one of the council members wanted to put on.
I think we should, and then they'll have time to think about it.
Okay, and then I, I can give, between now and December eleventh, I can see if I can get less than an estimate, and actually have someone come give me, uh, contact to come give me an actual invoice in reference to that. Is that okay?
Mrs. Turner, is it possible to get citizens input, because I understand, I mean, there's several citizens that are right in the vicinity of that court, so is it a nuisance? Uh, does it create a nuisance after hours for them? Have we surveyed that?
No, ma'am, we have not. I, it did not come to my desk. The nuisance is a problem in reference to the lighting. What was brought to my attention is the council said that someone had approached town. I know the lights were out, uh, that someone had approached in reference to the needs for the lights. But I have not had any complaints to my office or aware of in reference to, uh, the lighting that's shining or anything in reference to that.
And had it with a citizen that, that lived within the vicinity of the basketball court, obviously, and, and that, uh, that citizen as well had, had went to several of the houses and, you know, had, had asked for basic approval, and he's willing to, uh, to go door to door to petition as well, you know, for, for approval.
Are you going to make a stop?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I'm, since you, since you want to go forward, I know that, uh, the wayfinding, uh, guide signage, uh, have attached for text on the scent, uh, please note that this was previously discussed, uh, I have a report here, uh, in reference to that we want to report, and we've had several concerns about those huge trucks coming down. And there's a person who definitely has to get lost in the world, because the HHS, it will direct you there, uh, they're coming, so we're having some of those needs, so we can go forward with, uh, the wayfair signs, but also on the subject of text dot, uh, there is an, um, yeah, I want to just, um, yeah. Uh, the, uh, reference, so we're looking at the rigidity in reference to company ticket people who park on both sides of text dots, uh, right wings, in reference to up nearby the park on number seven, by the soccer field, and so we're looking at research in reference to do that and reach out to text dot. But this wayfair information is in the packet. It is some signs that we can do to direct, and, uh, text dot is not opposed to doing such, but we have to follow these directions, and so we're gonna move forward with that, because it is an issue with those huge coming off of, coming down First Street, hitting Fourth Street, and they pass City Hall, so, uh, we can move forward with those wayfair signs.
Would they have to be put in order of ordinance?
Yes.
I don't think, you know, I think the last time we have looked into it, John, we've done it back over a year ago. I don't think it needs to be a sign. We have to get the approval.
It has to be an ordinance.
Through text dot. We have, and they have to place the signs.
Because it's actually text dot that's doing it, not the city. The city's just appropriate them, saying we'd like to put it on text dot right of ways, and, and or they look at the text dot will actually, uh, sign to maintain the sign, so it's not a city ordinance that we're controlling this sign.
Well, it's, you know, something similar to the speed limit as well, so is this something that we would need to, to put into ordinance form? Can it be there, there, uh, you know, basically the same, uh, put it by them?
We don't need an ordinance on it. The city would like to, you obviously can put it in if it's ordinance is, uh, but it's not anything that's required to install a sign, a directional sign. Uh, speed limits have to be in there because of our criminal penalties associated with.
But we can also put it into ordinance to, uh, for, for no large age to, or to, to be driven through the, with the.
Right, because that would establish a criminal penalty as well, so that would have to be in an ordinance form.
Because in reference to what you were saying about the aside, um, ticketing on both sides, the people park, it does require an ordinance as per term, you know, that, because I could check with them, they do this.
Anything that involves a ticket or a fine does. With the wayfairing signs on here, where it says City Hall to the right, or straight ahead, right?
Because you'd be basically on their.
On, on the text dot right of ways, they will tell us where we can place them. They, they give us the parameters of how big the signs are, how big the, what we can put on them, and then we have to meet with them out there, and they say, okay, you can put it here, because there's not many places at the, at, like, the, you know, stopper side of here, that we can put a base on. You know, so that was one of the issues, that we would have to get the, the seat where we can put it, and what, and how far back it needs to be in every.
The general rule of thumb is if you can get a ticket for it, it needs to be in an ordinance.
Correct.
Okay, we put that on?
Yes, I just, I just made over that thinking.
And you can add to that, Marina, is right here, where Phelps is, you know how we have the one ways, people, big truck people are always coming on, on, because there's a sign that it's facing the other way, not, not if you're coming this way. Not if they're moving.
Okay, and, and the last thing I have to report on is the water well updated. The well D is fully operated with all three motors in place. Of the third motor was serviced at about a cost of about eight hundred dollars. Uh, Phelps did assist and confirm that the power availability in the motor is in service as we speak. Uh, the plaza well is being monitored. Advanced water technology, ran the camera down the well and found the screen, and discovered it's about eighty-five percent. Uh, we've reviewed that with MNS Engineering, and we're not going to do any more sober blasting. He's concerned that if we continue to next it a little bit more, that we may damage the screen. Eighty-five percent is probably pretty good, is what we're gonna do. Next week, uh, as cleaning and plating the cement club in, and once this is done, we can proceed to the next phase that we're doing. Remember that there were approximately nine items we needed to do. All nine are done, and meeting with MNS tomorrow morning, uh, so that we can go over all of those nine items, and just doing a field study, and so hopefully we can go through the second phase and that well. But it looks like the best we're gonna be, is we just get that back to eighty-five percent production, which is higher than what we've had for some time. Are there any questions in reference to that portion of my report?
Will we be okay with assuming that we have three motors?
Yes, I actually, um, the second motor was actually kind of failing a little bit, uh, because we've been working it so hard, and so once we get the third motor in there, they were able to fire a little bit better, so it's already in place, it's working very well, and so we're happy that we were able to complete that portion. Uh, I mean, that ends my portion of my report. Are there any questions for me? Good job. Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna go on to new business, consideration in action to approve the runoff election, early voting calendar.
Yes, uh, in your package, you have the calendar that states we will start early voting on Wednesday, December third, and go through Tuesday, December sixteenth, with the late nights being the tenth from eight to eight, and the sixteenth from eight to eight, and then we will have your runoff election on this Wednesday.
For this calendar, it's per Secretary of State.
Yes.
I've learned approvals. Make the motion to approve the runoff election, early voting calendar.
Councilman, you can have a second?
What second, ma'am?
Okay, second by Councilman, please. Discuss, please?
Yes.
Councilman, please?
Yes. Yes.
You did it?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, Councilman, please?
Yes.
Okay, all opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you, Monica. Now, we're gonna go on to item three B, consideration in action to approve the twenty-five foot variance for nine thirteen railroad street.
Good evening, Mary Jones members. Um, we just noticed an error on the agenda. Um, we have Mr. Lawrence, whoever he's here, that is seeking a variance, uh, twenty-five foot variance, uh, to bring in a mobile home. Um, on the agenda, it has nine thirteen railroad, uh, but the actual location of the property where the mobile home is going to be placed is nine twenty-nine Gilley, which is, you should have in your packet, um, her application for the variance.
Nine twenty-nine?
Nine twenty-nine Gilley Street.
And for I D O, I saw a railroad.
And unfortunately, since it's for a variance, and that's per waving zoning regulations and things like that, to get proper notice to the public to show up and give input, we'd have to have the correct address.
And that's the same state it did the last time. We'd find to do six to seven.
Oh, no.
And, and I, she has, the lady, aunt of the property, to, to give us, to check. She hasn't told me either to move her, her mobile home, that's where she lives, she pays rent, and they're gonna be, something else in the property. The mobile home is here, but it's gonna be the, we live for the years at the end of this year, and she needs to move it. It's impossible. She does not wanna move out of Florida. Her children are in Florida, so she's been here thirty-nine years, and I just try to help her to see if maybe she can move the home there, because she will be owning instead of letting him, she already owns the mobile home.
Maybe let, I mean, maybe the first item, uh, wanting to finish that, which is to have it come to them, to give them.
No, it's not named approved by P and C.
It is not, please?
No, it has not. They did deny the variance, and she is going to move that to the council.
So, especially if it's on, you know, what was there, reasonable?
Um, the statistics, and they did not feel that, um, a mobile home, which would be the only one in that area, was, um, like this, is exactly what it said.
But there's other ones. I could, I could hear, and there are other ones, um, there are a lot of, there's the one we've.
Where's this at? Oh, oh, yeah, right, right, that's from the, the.
Not under the gym.
Since we can't discuss the item.
We can't discuss it.
Oh.
Is this February eleven, right?
Yes. Only eleven, yeah. Alina?
December eleven.
We'll push it to the beginning. Okey, okey. Oh, that's your, thank you, thank you, everybody.
I was gonna ask, why, why was the wrong address put on nine twenty-nine?
Uh, because her address, this is, that is her address, the applicant address, and most come of the first with the application, they usually got the statement, decided to use the sec, and so.
She does not live on Gilley, but she is, uh, the owner of that property would like to place mobile.
No action?
No action. We're just, we're just putting no action, we make it different.
Okay, now we're gonna go to item three C, consideration in action to approve the variance and lot sizes on flat to property, uh, on thirteen hundred Hospital Boulevard.
Yes, we have, um, our developer here, and, uh, what they're asking is to get a variance on several lots, and has been approved by P and C. It, um, is gonna be from part-size homes, and, uh, to go forward with council, we can also get their approval.
This is across the P and P?
Yes.
The property of the EDC, or the owners of the?
I, I know everyone's, you know, was that all by EDC?
So, hospital board?
Yes, hospital thirteen hundred, hospital Boulevard, uh, the water tower, and, yeah, the fire department, something. We have the engineer here, we have a map, yeah, because it's in the opening area, in between the fire department and, uh, where the house is, for the, the.
This is one of the.
Now, this is the engineer for the project, uh, he can show you some of the key components of this subdivision, and the smartest, we need to put out the hardware.
Mindy, before he does that, is there any applause on?
No.
No one is.
Um, Mike Sabella, um, the sole engineer itself of the project, and I'm not sure what information you've received, but we worked, uh, prepared the plat and plans for this development. It's a whole lot, single-family development on two and a half acres. It's right across the street, or across the highway from, uh, was it the Holden Hospital?
Oh, yes.
So, it's, uh, directly across the highway from there, and, uh, basically, it's vacant land, it's, uh, there are not really any trees on there, so it's, uh, it's good vacant property to develop. And the only main site constraint that was on there was, there's a natural low, which conveys, uh, some, uh, significant watershed, uh, amount of runoff that goes right through the metal property. But in our design, we, we accounted for that in our street design and drainage, and we did have the, the plans prepared, and they were viewed by a city engineer and approved by, uh, city engineer and text out as well, so.
And text out?
Yes, sir.
Is that in your packet?
That should be in your packet, there is a text after the.
They did review the drainage report, and, uh, mainly, they, they were looking at the, there's a culvert downstream, and they were looking at the impact of the culvert, but, uh, the runoff increase for a whole acre, for the whole lots, pretty minimal, so, uh, they didn't see any major impact to the highway, so, um. So, we did get all the approvals that we need from the text dot, uh, city, and, uh, right now, we're, uh, requesting a variance approval, because, uh, subdivision ordinance has basically like a seventy-five by a hundred minimum, uh, lot size, and these, um, they're not much, much under that. They're, a lot of cases, they're about seventy feet wide by a hundred, so they're just right under the mark, and, uh, also with the cul-de-sac lots, um, they're, they're close to what the required size is, so. And in comparison to a lot of subdivisions, you know, they're actually pretty good sized lots, so, um, the city engineer also had, had an input of that, and favored, uh, the lot sizes. So, that's, uh, first action I, that we're requesting is the variance at this point.
So, what you're asking for is for lots, not houses?
Lot size variance, yes, that's it. And, uh.
Which is five foot, I think.
Well, it's, it varies, but it's, it's not much, yeah, approximately.
Yeah, there's no, I don't think there's any more than five.
Okay, so, so, uh, the maximum variance that you're requiring is five foot?
Yeah, basically, uh, the most lots, about six percent of the lots are under the mark, so we're just asking us, because of the whole, that the lot configuration as it is, that's shown on the plat, to be approved by council.
Okay, so the majority of them, we, the, the.
Majority of, uh.
Five hundred?
Yeah, majority, uh, are a little bit under.
Okay.
Yeah.
What type of homes can you build?
Single family, um, just, uh, therefore, single-family development, so any kind of home building.
So, they can get mobiles there, or two bedrooms?
Well, not, no, I mean, uh. These.
What's the zoning, I'm guessing?
It's.
Is there, is there any restrictions on the homes that can be built there, or?
Whatever, single-family home is, is permitted.
So, they're mobile?
Yeah. Yeah, because right now, what we're doing is we're, we're subdividing the property, and when it comes to putting a home there, then that's, uh, way out, I look at it as more of a permit issue, so.
I have a question. If the, if the planning and zoning commission, uh, okayed this, that's why you just want to, uh, various on, uh, on this, uh. But, but what, what bothers me, and then, the water's gonna go across, right?
Yeah, but we designed, we designed a channel, concrete channel, that's conveying everything through the, through the property.
Your side?
Mm-hmm.
The south side.
What does it do downstream?
It goes right to the culvert. That's, there's a culvert, right, uh, as approaches Third Street, so it would.
It will go.
It goes.
Hit the street, and then, and then shed off into the.
It goes through the middle, there's a concrete, twelve, twelve-foot wide concrete channel that's kind of right in the middle of, of the two and a half acres.
That's the one that, it goes, it, uh, it goes under the highway, correct?
Right.
And, and sheds into the copper.
Right, that, that's the culvert.
The next section? The, 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 we have drawings, but.
You have drawings of the lots, right?
Yes, they're in the next. It looks like this.
Yeah.
This was, uh, this property wasn't the EDC property?
If you have an exception.
I thought so. Yeah, so EDC owned all that, all that property. Yes, and EDC owned all that, all that property? Generally, is that the, that's the same one that, that apartments were gonna purchase, right?
All that property? This way?
It's towards the back, it's a great, just... That's...
We just told them...
Is there a letter from Mr. Henry?
That, no, yes, you should have that in the package. It's a drink, and from them, as well. And would you have the owner of the property here, well?
You see in the middle of the property, there's a, there's a, that's where the road channel is, so...
Right, the wall is in the middle?
Right, and it's all, it's all controlled.
You'll have to come back to the city of the council, in reference to what's gonna look like with certain, but right now, we need to do this plat and something like that, because right now, it's just one...
So why don't you go through all that book, right?
Just to base us, the way, because he has to go record it with county, that's the one they have to do it, to give it each individual pin number, each individual address, is what he's trying to put together, and he has to come back to the board and say...
That's a lot, that's a lot of work to go through, to have a plan, as well.
He has to come back, he has to go back to the board, where it is, so we have to just try to ask for the variance for the lot size.